I'm going to go ahead and call this regular session of the Bloomington Common Council to order here at 6:30 on Wednesday, August 6th. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rosenbarker?
Here.
Rallo? Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Stasburg?
Here.
Daley?
Here.
Zulik?
Here.
Asari?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. To open the meeting today, since today was the first day of school, I went down a rabbit hole today looking at the history of education. So for some of you who know, I actually have a master's in teaching, so like it was kind of a fun, fun little rabbit hole for me to go down, but of course, the history of education is like huge and massive and there could be whole classes and books written on this topic. So I thought that I would highlight these few pieces of education in Indiana. So surprise, I was surprised to learn that Indiana was actually the first state to implement a state-funded public school system as part of their 1816 state constitution. And that's an interesting aspiration, apparently. There was not actually enough like tax dollars to properly fund it, but they did want to create it. And so partly as a consequence of that, there were lots of local schools that popped up that were actually run by various public groups, including various faith groups. And what that meant was that black people, according to the, let's see if the source, the Indiana, the early years from old print shop portfolio in 1966, said that black people moving into the state actually fared pretty good in securing education for their children. And between 1816 and 1831, they could attend public school without as much discrimination and that private schools run by Quakers and other sectarian groups, Methodist, Baptist, tended to include black children. But then in 1834, a resolution passed taxing black people $2 for the school fund instead of white people who were only taxed 50 cents. And then in 1843, the General Assembly prohibited black children from attending district schools. So it was kind of a backwards evolution in some ways, in my opinion. In 1869, the General Assembly required that school trustees organize separate schools for black children. And, and that was all very interesting to me. And then, of course, I ran into the fact that education was not actually compulsory until 1897. So all of these schools, they were state-funded in theory, property was given, but you didn't actually have to send your kid to school until 1897. So I could go on and on and on, but I won't. And instead, I will move into our actual meeting trusting that if people are interested, they'll do a little bit more school research because it is really, really interesting to think about the history of education in this country as a whole and in this state. So moving into our agenda summation, first we have some minutes for approval and there was a slightly revised version of those sent out this evening with, or this afternoon with a spelling corrected. Then we'll move into reports, reports from council members and then from the mayor and city offices where we have a report from the Bloomington Monroe County Human Rights Commission. We'll have reports from council committees where I believe that we have a report from the Committee on Council Processes and from the Public Safety Income Tax Committee. And then we will have reports from the public and that will be the first time in the agenda that a member of the public can make a public comment on items not on the agenda. After those reports, we will have appointments to boards and commissions. We do have some appointments this evening. We have no legislation for first reading tonight, but we have several pieces for second reading. So we will move into second readings and resolutions, starting with ordinance 2025-25, which is a UDO amendment related to self-service storage. Then we will have ordinance 2025-26, a UDO amendment related to fraternity or sorority house, artist studio or workshop, vehicle fleet operations. Then we will have ordinance 2025-27, amending the UDO and the vehicle fuel station part of the use table. Then we will have ordinance 2025-28, amending the UDO related to vehicle wash. And then ordinance 2025-29, amending the UDO related to tattoo or piercing parlor. Then we will end with ordinance 2025-30, vacating a public parcel related to a 12-foot public alley adjacent to 909 East University Street. After those ordinances, we will have an additional period of public comment. So if people want to comment on anything not on the agenda, they're also able to do it at that point and you may comment on one of those two sections. And of course, each piece of legislation will have a public comment area associated with it. I have a couple of notes about council schedule and then we will adjourn for the evening. So going back to the beginning, we have minutes for approval.
I move that the minutes from April 2nd, 2025 be approved as revised.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve those minutes. Does anybody have any questions on them? Clerk Bolden?
Would you be willing to change the motion to indicate not that they were revised, but that they were sent out again this afternoon since they weren't revised in this meeting?
Councilmember Daley?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yes. Would you be willing to change your motion to indicate that the minutes were sent out again this afternoon with a revision as opposed to indicating that they were revised because they were not revised in this meeting?
Happily.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, sorry. I will withdraw this motion and I move that the minutes from April 2nd, 2025 be approved as revised earlier via packet to council. Is that, is that okay? Okay.
Are there any other questions about this? Okay, thank you. I want to note that councilmember Rallo is now virtual, so if the clerk could please call the roll on the motion to approve the minutes.
Councilmember Rosenbarker? Yes. Rallo?
Yes.
I'm going to move on to councilmember Piedmont Smith and come back to councilmember Rallo. Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
And councilmember Rallo?
Yes, can you hear me?
Okay. Is, is the, could the volume be off in chambers? Because I did see the microphone mute thing go and then it does not appear, so councilmember Rallo is muted.
I'm not muted. I'll continue talking. Can you hear me?
We're seeing his closed captioning.
Oh, yeah.
Just not hearing him verbally.
Look at that. So that was.
So we can read you, councilmember Rallo.
That must be something to do with the sound in chambers, so.
By the way, none of you are visible.
The volume is up.
Are the speakers on?
Yeah, I believe so because these are working.
Okay. Clerk Bolden, we generally want to see and hear folks online. How does seeing the closed captioning but not hearing the person work?
I vote yes.
Oh, oh, there we go. Thank you to the tech team to make that happen.
Am I audible?
Yes, you are audible now.
Very good. You're not visible, by the way. None of you.
Oh.
All I can see is a seal of Bloomington. It's just FYI.
Okay. Thank you very much for that information. We will continue, oh, the video had been disabled. We will work on the video situation for any of other Zoom participants. We're clearly having a little bit of tech difficulty this evening, so. Clerk Bolden, you have received all the votes now, correct? Wonderful. So those minutes passed unanimously. Moving on to reports, first we have reports from council members. Councilmember Rosenbarker?
No report tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I have a few things to report on. First of all, today is the 80th anniversary of the bombing of Hiroshima. So I wanted to note that the significant world event on August 6th, 1945, a USB-29 bomber dropped a 15-kiloton uranium bomb on Hiroshima, killing an estimated 140,000 people by the end of that year and many more through the course of the following decades due to the radioactive fallout. The group Nihon Hidankyo is a nationwide Japanese network of atomic bomb survivors who are known as Hibakusha. And this organization was established in 1956 and it has worked to keep the legacy of the Hiroshima and Nagasaki bombings alive. It has advocated for the abolition of nuclear weapons and the ratification of the UN Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. And the organization did win the Nobel Peace Prize last year. Today, the UN Secretary General Antonio Guterres said in a statement that the very weapons that brought such devastation to Hiroshima and Nagasaki are once again being treated as tools of coercion. Guterres did add, however, that Nihon Hidankyo's Nobel Prize was cause for hope, saying that countries must draw strength from the resilience of Hiroshima and for the wisdom of the Hibakusha. So these are people who actually survived, who have spent the rest of their lives advocating for the abolition of nuclear weapons, which I also and this body have actually spoken out in favor of as well. Unfortunately, the United States is one of many countries that has not signed on to the UN Treaty. So I wanted to mark that. And then on a lighter note, I wanted to congratulate the organizers of The Taste of Bloomington, which occurred this past weekend. It seemed to, as a participant, I don't have any stats, but as a participant, it seemed to have been a big success. So I want to thank the organizers, the restaurant and food truck participants, the musicians and everybody who attended. It was a great way to activate Kirkwood Avenue and it was a free event. Of course, if you wanted food or drink, you had to pay for that, but free music, free good vibes, and so that, that was a great plus. And I also wanted to thank the nonprofit organization Garden Quest, who provided bokashi composting buckets so that at least some of the food waste will be composted. And finally, I do have my monthly constituent meeting this Saturday at 11 o'clock. You can join via Zoom or here in person in the McCloskey Room of City Hall. And that Zoom link is on the city council website, bloomington.in.gov/council. That is it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Daley?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to briefly remind everybody that I mentioned last week, I have a constituent meeting coming up on August 16th, which is a Saturday at 2:00 PM at the Monroe County Public Library, the Southwest Branch, Meeting Room A. This is for District 5, but it's, it's not, you don't have to live in District 5. Everybody is welcome to come. I will be joined by a very special guest, Director Hiddle from Planning and Transportation to talk about UDO updates and changes. So bring your questions. Hope to see you there, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Zulik?
Thank you. Couple things. I just want to acknowledge that the final construction bids for the convention center have been awarded and they are at $51 million, which is $1 million under their $52 million construction budget, including funding all alternates for the new expansion. So I just want to say thank you to everyone who was involved, including our design team, Schmidt Associates, Weddell Brothers Construction, JS Held, our lovely Capital Improvement Board members, including President John White Hart, who has been very lovely to me and walking me through the whole process. So thank you to them. And then secondly, I would just want to second councilmember Piedmont Smith's comments about Taste. It was lovely. I signed up to volunteer in the opening shift to set up and we were really only needed for like an hour and a half because there were so many people. So it was very inspiring to see so many people in the community come together and then even more people once it hit three and Taste started. And the food was incredible, so please go out and try all of our amazing local restaurants. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Asari?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, I just wanted to echo councilmember Piedmont Smith's recognition of the anniversary of the bombing of Hiroshima and then later Nagasaki, 80th anniversary. It brings to mind a personal relationship I had with a, a member of the team that worked on the atomic bomb, the Manhattan Project. He was a chemist. His name was Howard Guest and he was a microbiologist at Indiana University. He was first a chemist and he was involved in the purification of the isotope that was used in the bombs. And he and about 80 other physicists and chemists who worked on the Manhattan Project signed what was called a Szilard petition because it was begun by a physicist named Szilard. And it was meant to essentially give the full information to Truman about the effects of the atomic bomb and that they were urging it to be demonstrated before it was used on a civilian population. That petition never made it to Truman. It was intercepted by the military and it was, Truman never saw it. And I, it also brings to mind the fact that nuclear proliferation is still a problem. Many countries have them. We have multiple weapons of mass destruction, of course, synthetic biology, bioweapons, AI is involved, advanced robotics and so forth. So we very much need treaties, international treaties, that can essentially bring the world community into some semblance of pulling, pulling back from the abyss. We withdrew from the ABM Treaty back under Bush I or Bush II, excuse me, W. Bush. We withdrew from the INF Treaty under Trump, his first term of office. And the only remaining nuclear treaty is the START Treaty, which is set to expire in February of, of 2026, which gives us the means for verification and transparency regarding nukes, which is important. So it's something to keep in mind and to urge our lawmakers at higher levels that the future of humanity, if you listen to Annie Jacobson's work, she's written numerous books on it, she's a wonderful speaker and she talks about that we're just one mistake away from such a terrible accident of a, of a nuclear holocaust. So we should all keep that in mind and urge our lawmakers to negotiate in good faith with other countries in the world to back away from this risk. So that's all I've got, thank you.
And I just have a short report this evening. I also wanted to mention my constituent meeting, which is supposed to be, I just looked at the date and I forgot it, on August 16th. Usually I have it on the third Saturday and I haven't officially canceled it yet on the calendar, but I will need to cancel that and change it because with school starting comes the start of sports competitions and my Saturday mornings change. So I will probably reschedule that as a, as a Zoom meeting. So if you're interested in attending that, you can just kind of keep your eye on my council member calendar and council member page and that will end up going out. So moving on down our agenda, I have to go back to my agenda. Next, we have reports from the mayor and city offices and we have a report from the Bloomington Monroe County Human Rights Commission. If you want to make sure to state your name as part of your report, welcome and thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Ryan Shaddy and it is my honor to stand before you tonight as the Chair of the Bloomington Monroe County Human Rights Commission and present the 2025 Bloomington Monroe County Human Rights Award. Unfortunately, we live during a time of high housing prices and lack of affordable and adequate services to alleviate the root causes of homelessness. These folks are some of our most vulnerable and underserved in our community. We believe as members of the BMHRC that humans have a right to shelter. In fact, housing status is a protected class under our city's human rights ordinance. Ordinance 1516 in 2015 amended the human rights ordinance and passed by city council by a vote of 9-0. The amendment stated, whereas the city of Bloomington seeks to protect its citizens in the enjoyment of civil rights and promote mutual understanding and respect among all who live and work within the city, and whereas prejudice, intolerance and discriminatory practices directly and profoundly threaten the rights and freedom of city of Bloomington residents, and whereas there is reason to believe that people who are perceived to be homeless are discriminated against in employment, public accommodations, housing and education. While we continue as a city to strive to achieve the lofty ideals of our human rights ordinance, including the right to shelter, there are so many individuals and organizations who help build the foundation needed to serve this mission. One of those organizations is the Bloomington Severe Winter Emergency Shelter, or BSWERS. According to BSWERS' nominator, in 2024, the organization provided shelter, community and dignity to some of Bloomington's most vulnerable neighbors. As a new organization operating on a minimal budget, they mobilized quickly to open on the coldest nights of the year. They offered no strings attached shelter and support to those without other options. BSWERS is a collaborative effort led by a dedicated group of volunteers in local faith communities. Shelter space was provided by two downtown churches, First United Methodist and First Christian Church. Their nominator praised the tireless work of volunteer coordinators Ally Jewell and Caleb Hoagland, along with the BSWERS Board of Directors, the Reverend John Niota and Sarah Lynn Gershon, along with all the shift leads and shelter volunteers, 196 volunteers, to be exact, who tirelessly served 100 unhoused community members over the 42 coldest nights of the year. They provided shelter, community and dignity to some of Bloomington's most vulnerable neighbors who had limited to no resources to survive those evenings. The BMC HRC, that is such a mouthful sometimes, is pleased to present the 2025 City of Bloomington and Monroe County Human Rights Award to the Bloomington Severe Winter Emergency Shelter. This commission recognizes and appreciates your hard work, folks back in the back here, and perseverance, and we look forward to seeing how you continue to serve our unsheltered neighbors in their most vulnerable times. If you guys would please come forward to be honored. Oh, over here. everyone feels safe and respected and valued. Thank you, councilmembers, for your time tonight.
Thank you. Are there any councilmember comments or questions? Councilmember Daley?
Just thank you very much. Appreciate that, that really important and hard work and I know that was a lot and it was very needed and very appreciated for the people that you helped, so thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I had the honor of working with these folks last winter and I think that this organization will be needed for the foreseeable future. I know that we have heading home and we're working very hard to make homelessness brief for air, non-repeating, but in the interim, there are folks who risk freezing to death in our winter environment. So I, I'm just really, really grateful for these folks for pulling this together and I'm proud to, to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilmember comments or questions? Okay. I will just echo the thanks that other people have already said and also thanks to the Bloomington Monroe County Human Rights Commission for the work that they do, not just in presenting this award and recognizing the work being done by others in our community, but also you guys do really important work too. So thank you very much. Moving on to council committees, councilmember Piedmont Smith, I think that you're chair maybe of both of the committees giving your reports tonight, so what do you want to start with?
I will start with Committee on Council Processes. I mean, you heard from us last time, so hopefully you're not sick of hearing from this committee, but we have a short thing this time, which is revising the rules for public comment because currently our rules for public comment talk about citizens being allowed to comment. And of course, we want to hear from residents of our community whether they are citizens or not. And so we propose to change wherever it says citizens, change that to residents. So as you can see displayed here are our rules and it's just, I think there are maybe four places where we're changing that word.
Thank you. Are there councilmember questions or comments on this change to our rules for public comment? I think that we need an official motion to change the, let me get the, change the rules for making public comment on agenda and non-agenda items to represent the change before us. Do I have such a motion?
So moved. Second.
I think, I think that, that we actually need a motion that isn't just a so moved based on mine. Is that correct, Clerk Bolden?
I think if you restate the motion that was so moved, that would be sufficient.
If I do?
As the president.
Okay. The, the motion is to change the rules for making public comment on agenda and non-agenda items to the document brought before us by the Committee on Council Processes, which changes the word citizens to the word residents in all places on the document. Is that good?
Works.
Now that there is an official motion, are there any other comments or, on this motion? Okay, I have one. I just want to say thank you because I thought that we had already done that at some point and maybe we changed citizens to residents somewhere else, but I'm, I'm glad to, to have this changed on. Any other? Great. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt new rules?
Yes.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that motion passes 7-0, so those are our new rules for public comment and so those should be updated on our website in the coming days. Councilmember Piedmont Smith, next.
The second report is from the PS Lit Committee of the Monroe County Income Tax Council. That's the Public Safety Local Income Tax Committee comprised of representatives from Ellisville, Steinsville, Monroe County Government and City of Bloomington. We met in July to determine what the, what proportion of the 0.25% of that local income tax rate should go for our central dispatch budget. So we decided to keep that proportion the same as last year, which means that we don't need to take action as a Monroe County Income Tax Council because there is no change. So we, we, as, as required by state law, we issued a call out for proposals from emergency service providers that are not part of City of Bloomington, Ellisville or Monroe County Government. We received no applications. We looked at the budget for central dispatch and the reserves that they had. We looked at the budget for central dispatch and the reserves that they had available to them, and we determined that the amount that was received for 2025 would be sufficient for 2026. We don't have actual new figures, but we based it on the current year figures. So, we decided not to change that rate. So, that will come off the top for central dispatch. The rest is distributed among the four governmental units.
Great, thank you very much. Are there questions for Councilmember Piedmont Smith about the PS Lit Committee's decision? Great, thank you very much. Thank you to other council members who are also on that committee. Moving on, oops, we have our first period of public comment next. So, if you are a member of the public and you wish to make a comment on an item not on the agenda, if you're in chambers, you can approach the microphone, and you will have up to three minutes. If you're on Zoom, you can go ahead and raise your hand using the reactions tab, or you can send a chat message to the host. And I do see somebody moving in chambers, so if you could make sure that you sign in there, which I think I see that you are doing, and state your name for the record. And I'm just going to check. Our staff, we have the timer ready. Fantastic. Go ahead and start when you're ready. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I first want to start off by thanking Mr. Chavet from the Human Rights Commission, sort of putting a spotlight on the compassion of our community with the Bloomington Severe Winter Shelter that they put together. Amazing what they were able to do in such a short period of time. Tonight, I want to talk about my third part of, on homelessness, specifically, public order and budget accountability. As we've gone through this budget cycle and future budget cycles, it's important that we evaluate real outcomes on our local homelessness strategies. We believe that the future must include safe, vibrant public spaces and compassionate effective care. We don't think the values are mutually exclusive. So, we urge you to have outcome-based process when you put into place to ask these questions. What are we getting for money we spend on homelessness-related services? How much is reactive cleanups, crisis, emergency housing? How much is it preventive? Preventive aid, easy for me to say, leading to permanent housing, reduced recidivism, reduced emergency calls, and restored community spaces? Our community is a very generous one, as we've heard earlier today, but our service system is saturated. Local nonprofits are stretched thin, case managers face unimaginable caseloads, and we heard from the mayor in her recent press release about the Crawford apartment situation, which illustrates what happens when we fund housing without fully funding supportive services. So, the chamber urges all of us, all residents, to hold service providers accountable for results, not just good intentions, that we prioritize data-driven funding that demonstrates which programs truly help people transition out of homelessness and not just maintain it. And a recent Indy Star column highlighted a difficult but very important truth: public order matters. When public disorder is allowed to escalate, whether through encampments, untreated mental illness, or lack of oversight and supportive housing, a ripple effect throughout the community occurs. This isn't just about criminalizing homelessness, which is not the intention at all, but just having realistic intentions. We have to have, we can't pretend public disorder doesn't come at a cost. It does, to businesses, families, even those experiencing homelessness who deserve environments where they can recover. Downplaying concerns about public safety often becomes a luxury belief, one that ignores the daily realities, and one that I have been guilty of as well. You can support mental health care and housing-first model and still expect streets to be safe and public parks to be usable. Ignoring it doesn't make it go away. Our members want Bloomington be known as its, for its compassion and for its functionality. A progressive community should never be at odds with safety and civic disorder. We can and must do both. I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in chambers? Is there anybody raised their hand on Zoom? Okay, seeing no more public commenters for now, we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thank you. I would like to recommend for the Board of Housing Quality Appeals, we have two seats. I would recommend that we appoint Navdeep Bodhi to seat C1 and Zoe Zolman to seat C2.
Very much. We have a motion and a second for two appointments to the Board of Housing Quality Appeals. Are there council member questions? Great. Clerk Bolden, if you could call the roll on those appointments?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daly?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. That unanimously passes, and I want to thank Mr. Bodhi and Ms. Zolman for their service to that board. We have no legislation for first reading, so we're right into legislation for second readings. Councilmember Daly?
I move that ordinance 2025-25 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance 2025-25. Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion to introduce?
Councilmember Stasburg?
Yes.
Daly?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes.
Wait, Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
I'm so sorry. I forgot where we started. That motion passes. Will the clerk please read?
Yes. Ordinance 2025-25 to amend Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Use Table Amendment and Use Specific Standards, Storage, and Self-Service. The synopsis is as follows: This amendment would reduce the zoning districts where this use would be allowed. The proposed amendment would allow this use as a permitted use in the mixed-use corridor and mixed-use student housing districts only. A new use-specific condition has been proposed that would only allow this use in the MS district if there are more than 20 dwelling units.
Thank you.
I move that ordinance 2025-25 be adopted. Second.
Thank you. It looks like we have a member planning here to present. If you could go ahead and introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you. Eric Grulick, Development Services Manager. So, I am here to present a series of UDO amendments tonight. There are five of them that are coming to the council tonight. These were part of a package of seven that went to the Plan Commission in July. Two of those were held back for further discussion for the next hearing coming up next week. So, there were five of these amendments that left the Plan Commission that were forwarded on to you, so we'll step through those five tonight. So, real quickly, these are, there are five amendments that are coming to you, a total of seven that are packaged together, and a lot of these deal with reducing the zoning districts within the UDO where certain land uses can occur. A lot of these uses have certain negative effects that we've seen over the years in terms of a lack of street activity. A lot of these are vehicle-oriented uses. They don't, they are not high-employment generating uses. Some of them can be very environmentally unfriendly. They are not very employ, they don't offer a lot of jobs, can have some negative impacts on adjacent properties, and in general, you know, these are things that we certainly feel like we have a lot of, and these take away from land that is available for housing. So, I'll real quickly just kind of go through the first one. So, the first one that is here tonight, this is ordinance 25, 2025-25, deals with the use storage self-service. So, we are proposing in this UDO amendment to reduce the zoning districts where this is allowed to just the mixed-use corridor zoning district, the MC zoning district, and to allow this as an accessory use in the student housing district only. So, real quickly on this screen here, you can see a map of the MC zoning districts. So, all of the uses that we are going to be discussing tonight in regards to vehicles, as well as self-storage units, we're proposing to reduce to just the MC zoning districts. So, you can see where those zoning districts are. These are the portions of the city that are adjacent to our arterial roads, so certainly the more heavily developed commercial corridors along South College and South Walnut, West Third Street, College Mall Road area, North Walnut along the bypass. So, while we are proposing to reduce the zoning districts where these uses are allowed, there's certainly still a lot of land that is available for them. So, for the self-storage unit use specifically, as I mentioned, we are proposing to allow this in the MC zoning district only, and we are also proposing two new use-specific standards to help further regulate this use. One of those is that the maximum footprint that is allowed for this use shall not be more than 1,500 square feet or 20% of the property, whichever is less. And then the second one deals with this use within the MS, which is the mixed-use student housing district, that allows this only as an accessory use if there are more than 20 dwelling units on the property. So, as I mentioned, you know, we are proposing just to reduce the districts where this is allowed, to help give more land for other land uses that the community needs a lot more, and certainly for housing. So, the Plan Commission did hear this and voted 5 to 0 to forward this to you with a favorable recommendation, and so I am here tonight to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Grulick, does council have any questions? No questions from council members on this ordinance. Okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and go to public comment. Oh, Councilmember Rallo, I'm so sorry. I did not see your hand up there. Thank you.
Mr. Grulick, I had a question about, is there any discussion at the Plan Commission? I see that some of these, although they're arterials and high-traffic and so forth, and so there's probably a good rationale to place storage units there, but these are considered gateways to the community. Is there any, is there any discussion about the aesthetics and whether this is appropriate for certain areas, for instance, North Walnut?
Question, and this is something that we deal with a lot with self-storage buildings, is that they are held to the same architectural standards as every other building, meaning they have to have a certain amount of modulation, projections, windows, and awnings, which can be very challenging for self-storage units, but they do, they are still able to meet those. So, they are held to the same standards that all buildings are held to.
Well, okay, let me just drill down a little bit more. So, there is a very large facility on North, you know, Walnut, and it doesn't seem to have windows. It has a lot of doors for storage and so forth. Am I mistaken about that, that this is referring to self-storage? Do you know the facility I'm talking about? I don't know the name of it, but...
Well, so there are, have not, there's only been two, well, two or three self-storage buildings that have come in under the UDO and met, been able to meet the architectural requirements. It's possible the one that you're thinking of is on way far north Walnut, and that's actually in the county.
Oh, it is? Oh, that, so that's county jurisdiction?
Yeah, if you're, if you're thinking about the one where Walnut almost merges with I-69, that's in the county.
I see, okay. And obviously, their architectural standards are quite different. Is this something that?
Yeah, I can't speak to their standards.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, well, it's something maybe to address at a later time with our colleagues in the county then.
Yeah.
But I, but I appreciate that. So, in other words, there are architectural standards that are, we would say, superior and wouldn't render a building like the one I'm describing.
Yeah, so the building that you're thinking of is the same, if it's the same one that I'm thinking of, you know, those would certainly not meet our architectural standards.
Okay, all right. Thanks for that clarification.
Are there other council member questions? Councilmember Assari?
Quick one, and thank you so much for the presentation, and I'm sorry if I missed this, but will there be any current storage facilities that will become non-conforming?
If there are any, and I'm sure that there are probably a few of those, I don't have a map of every single self-storage building that's in the city, so there are certainly some of those that could be rendered non-conforming. You know, they're allowed to certainly continue and remain in business and exist. They just can't expand if that use isn't allowed in the district where they are.
Happy to wait, okay. And then just a similar question is whether we think there's any market sort of, I don't know, implications of limiting storage units, like, you know, is this going to make, because something I've actually often wondered is that are all of the storage units, do we have any sense of, are they all at capacity? Is there still a lot of pent-up demand for storage, et cetera?
Yes, we get a lot of requests, a lot of inquiries about self-storage units coming into town in new locations, so there's certainly a lot of demand for them. I think what makes them appealing is, you know, it's a lot of low overhead, and so they're very easy to install and a long-term benefit to the property owner, but it doesn't really activate the street, as I was mentioning. You know, it's just a very negative, low land use in terms of providing much amenities beyond, you know, income for the owner, and, you know, there's certainly a lot of better uses for the land that we've identified that we would like to try to make a little bit less likely.
But my concern is just that question about if, if there's a lot of demand for storage in Bloomington for users, right, for residents of Bloomington to store their things, and we restrict the possible development of storage, does that, you know, as a, as a storage owner, do I raise the prices? And like, what, like, what does that do to the needs of residents of Bloomington who want to store their things?
Well, so that's, that's, that can be a very multifaceted answer in terms of, you know, acquiring goods and just storing them. You know, if you don't have the place to store the things, do you really need all those things? But to get back to your main point there, and going back to the map that I was showing for the mixed-use corridor district areas, there is a lot of land where this use can certainly still occur. You know, we're maybe taking off 5% of that, that area. So, there's lots of land that this use can still occur. But as I mentioned, you know, we see other higher uses for this land besides self-storage units, and we want to try to take some of these low-hanging fruits that don't have a lot of return for the community as a whole, and make them, you know, offer this land for other uses that could be better.
Thank you very clear. Thank you so much.
Other council member questions? Okay. Now, we can go to public comment, I think. So, if there's a member of the public in chambers who would like to comment on this particular UDO ordinance amendment to further limit the use of self-store, self-service storage, approaching the microphone, and you would have up to three minutes. If you are online, you can raise your hand using the reactions tab or send a chat message to the host. I don't see anybody moving in chambers. Are there any hands raised on Zoom? Okay, I'll come back to council then for...
Sorry, there's one right now.
Oh, now that, I keep on getting surprised by Zoom tonight. Go, go ahead, whenever you're unmuted, please state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Paul Rousseau. I just have one question. How will the proposed changes affect access to people who don't use motor vehicles to get their things stored? In other words, pedestrians and bicyclists? Thank you.
Thank you. I feel like I need to ask for public comment again, just to make sure. No other hands raised on Zoom? Okay, thank you very much. Now, let's revert back to council then for council member comments or any last questions? Councilmember Assari? Who wants to go first? Councilmember Rallo? Go for it.
I'm, I'm thinking we probably have the same question, so I think Mr. Rousseau had an excellent question. Mr. Grulick, could you, could you speak to that? Are we limiting access for people who don't drive cars?
Yeah, so this, this ordinance change doesn't really ax, or change how buildings are accessed. You know, as I kind of briefly discussed, the mixed-use corridor or are the portions of the city that are along our more highly-traveled arterial roads that probably have better access in terms of pedestrian improvements and road connectivity. So, if anything, I'd say that we're allowing these only in the places that have that better access to some degree.
I see, okay. So, there are pedestrian and biking facilities along these arterials that could be utilized? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member questions or closing comments? Councilmember Assari?
I think sort of, it's kind of a question and a comment. It's... I think sort of, it's kind of a question and a comment. It's, that, the sort of, what do we know about people who use storage in Bloomington, right? I mean, are, because I, I think in a, in a, in, on paper, I have no qualms with, with, with the sort of theory here, with the theory of change, with the argument that's being made. I, I agree. Like, I'd rather that we had houses than storage units. I think, like, I think all of that makes a lot of sense. However, I'm trying to understand, just, just to be sure. I mean, we represent the people of Bloomington as well, and, and, you know, I, you know, I, my, my thought is that the vast majority of people who are using storage are, you know, my first thought goes, okay, it's the student population. They go, they come, okay, they're, okay, there's lots of, maybe, maybe that's a large portion, but there's also a lot of people who maybe are in between moving houses, or, you know, who are here only for a portion of the year. You know, I can think of a lot of different uses of storage, and so I'm just trying to understand what we know and what, how much thought went into the actual existence of storage to begin with, right? And, and just like what the residents of Bloomington need, and how they're interacting with storage, and how these changes would change their interactions with storage.
Yeah, and that's, that's a very difficult question to answer, because, you know, we don't have information on who rents these storage units. You know, that would be kind of protected information that the owner of the unit has, and they're not asking questions of why do you need this unit. So, all of the things that you touched on certainly are a wide range of needs of members of the community in different situations, you know, and it's just a balance, I guess, of what we have looked at of, you know, land that we continue to see that is used for this use that, that could have better uses. There's still a lot of land. I mean, I guess I really want to emphasize that there's still a lot of land within the community that is zoned for this use, where it can occur. And so, you know, we're certainly not severely limiting the places where this can happen. There's still a lot of areas where this, this certainly can be allowed. So, where we're pulling it out of, you know, the districts where it's allowed use now, for instance, the mixed-use medium-scale, or the downtown, or other areas, you know, some of those are areas that have a lot of residences in there or are embedded in neighborhoods, and these uses aren't always appropriate in highly-residential areas where you have a lot of people coming and going. You know, as I mentioned, it doesn't really activate the street presence. It's a very dead space, you know, along these street frontages that are oftentimes in neighborhoods. And so, we're trying to find better uses that can activate street presences. And so, just slightly reducing the districts where these allowed, you know, it, it might have a very negligible impact, honestly. But, you know, we're trying to just make some small adjustments to the code to get more land that is not getting swallowed up for these that could be used for better things.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thank you. I, I'm excited about this. I am. I wish it was actually a little larger, I guess, for mini-storage for some reason, but I would be up for just saying no more new mini-storages in the city of Bloomington. One time, I had a constituent meeting, and someone did say it saved their marriage because they were combining homes, and they got to put things in mini-storage for a while. So, I also think like that's a valid use. And just to also like touch on the, the residence question, or who called, who, who on Zoom, we have many storages already kind of all over the place, and there is at least one, well, I can think of two right now, right on the B-line. So, if people are walking or biking their belongings, there's one right on the B-line. It reminds me of the book, The Goldfinch, right, where he does take public transit to store his famous stolen piece of art. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there other council member comments? I'll go ahead and make one then, not seeing others right now. I wanted to address Councilmember Asari's point about storage unit demand with an anecdotal story that, that last summer, I did some research into if I needed a storage unit, was there one available? Kind of thinking to myself, if a lot of students need to store items over the summer, then that might be peak demand. There were plenty of units available, and I was honestly shocked about how much they cost, like hundreds of dollars a month. And I was just floored at, at some of those prices, in terms of speaking to Mr. Grulick's kind of early point that they are real moneymakers for whoever develops them, but they are not really beneficial to the city in terms of activating the street, in terms of being a place where community members can congregate and socialize and have activities, and they are, they don't have employees, so they're not producing jobs. They're, they're really not an economic benefit, and I think that we have, at this point, plenty of storage options. Once again, that is based on my anecdotal, personal research. And then, in terms of kind of your, your other concern, like, who are people using self-storage? Like, like, do they care about this change? At the Plan Commission, there was zero public comments related to this ordinance, and, and it was something that had to be noticed publicly on postcards to the entire city, and there was nobody who commented on it in, in any way. So, I will certainly be supporting this change this evening. Are there other council member comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 2025-25? Councilmember Daley?
Yes.
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So, that one passed 7-0. On to the next.
I move that ordinance 2025-26 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance 2025-26. Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion? Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-26 to amend Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Use Table Amendment Fraternity or Sorority House, Artist Studio or Workshop, Vehicle Fleet Operations, Large and Small. The synopsis is as follows. This amendment would propose the following changes to the Unified Development Ordinance and include the following. Fraternity or sorority, this amendment would remove the asterisk, 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 Lord, that is currently shown associated with the use fraternity or sorority that reference use-specific standards that were removed in 2023. However, the asterisk could not be removed at that time since that would require an amendment to the use table. Artist studio or workshop, this proposed amendment would add the use artist, studio, or workshop as a permitted use in the mixed-use student housing district. Office, this proposed amendment would add the use office as a permitted use in the mixed-use student housing district. And fleet, vehicle fleet operations, this amendment would add an asterisk to the use table to reference use-specific standards that were introduced and approved earlier this year. However, the asterisk could not be added at that time since that would require an amendment to the use table.
Thank you.
I move that ordinance 2025-26 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Grulick. Go ahead.
Eric Grulick, Development Services Manager, again. So, these series of amendments actually represent really more of kind of a housekeeping to the use table, in that changes to the use table require notification to all affected property owners, and so because some of the uses touch multiple zoning districts within the city, oftentimes, in order to meet all of our legal requirements, we have to send a notice to every member, every, every property owner within the city if we do changes to the use table. So, we don't do those very often, because that's a big undertaking for us financially as well as physically. So, the amendments as part of this ordinance just are kind of some cleanup. So, there was a change to the use-specific standards that was done to the UDO last year, I believe, that dealt with the removal of use-specific standards for the use fraternity or sorority, but we could not remove the asterisk that referenced those standards in the use table because, as I mentioned, that would require notification of the entire city for changing the use table. So, this change is simply removing that asterisk that is associated with the use fraternity or sorority house that previously referenced some use, some use-specific standards. So, by removing those use-specific standards, it also involves a slight renumbering to the use-specific standards. There are three other uses that the numbers for those change. So, this has a minor housekeeping cleanup as, as associated with this one as well. And then, another change that has been long on the list to try to give some more flexibility in the mixed-use student housing district. Oftentimes, when we have projects come forward that have ground-floor commercial space or other uses, sometimes they struggle to fill some of those uses. So, there's been some requests to allow for office space within the mixed-use student housing district to give some more flexibility for that use. So, we're proposing to add that as a permitted use within the mixed-use student housing district, as well as adding the use artist, studio, or workshop as a permitted use in the mixed-use student housing district as well. And then, so, excuse me, again, earlier this year, in the beginning part of the year, when we did our annual series of use-table amendments, we introduced some new use-specific standards for the use vehicle fleet operations. But again, we could not add the asterisk that referenced those in the use table, because that involved changes to the use table itself. So, at this time, we are adding the asterisk to reference those use-specific standards that were already approved. So, these were part of the amendments that were heard earlier, that the, that the council approved about a month and a half ago. So, those are already in place. We're just doing some cleanup here to add the asterisk that references those. So, again, this was heard by the Plan Commission last month, and they voted five-zero to forward this to you with a favorable recommendation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And, excuse me, I'm going to pass the gavel over to Councilmember Piedmont Smith, because we have an amendment for this one.
Yes, there is an amendment brought forward by Councilmember Stasburg, so...
So, I guess I would like to move Amendment 1 to ordinance 2025-26.
Second. All right. Councilmember Stasburg, please describe the amendment.
So, Mr. Grulick actually already described what the amendment does. It's regarding the fraternity and sorority section. The, as it's written, the attachment related to this only included removal of the asterisk, which tracks to a particular section of the UDO that describes what the special requirements are for that, and there are no more special requirements. And so, but the, a change that was made at the Planning Commission level that was not in the original packet and not in the original Attachment A was to also then delete that reference that it tracked back to, that 2003030B10, I think. And so, then, really, it is literally just deleting the heading fraternity and sorority house, and then renumbering, excuse me, renumbering everything else past that, so making 11 into 10, and 12 into 11, et cetera, et cetera, since that's no longer needed.
Very good. Any questions about this amendment? All right, seeing no questions. Is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on this amendment, which is just taking out a section that doesn't have anything in it anymore? I don't see anybody in chambers. Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to comment?
No.
Nobody on Zoom. All right, we will come back to council. Any final comments on the amendment? I cannot see Councilmember Rallo, but I assume, I will see if he has a comment? Nope. Okay. All right. Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll on Amendment 1 to ordinance 2025-26?
Yes, Councilmember Asari?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That amendment is adopted. The vote of seven to zero. I'll turn the gavel back over to President Stasburg.
Great, thank you. So, now we are back to ordinance 2025-26 as amended. Are there any council member questions about the ordinance as a whole? All right, seeing no questions. I think that means that we need to go to public comment. So, are there any members of the public who would like to make a comment on ordinance 2025-26? If you're in chambers, you can make your way to the podium. If you're online, you can go ahead and raise your hand using the reactions tab. Do we have anybody raising their hand on Zoom?
No.
Okay. Not seeing anybody still. Let's go ahead and come back to council for any council member comments on this ordinance. Any comments? All right, seeing no comments. Will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 2025-26 as amended? Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Thank you. Great, thank you very much. That motion passes 6-0. Now, we're on to the next one. Lucky to parliamentarian, who would like to make that motion?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I move that ordinance 2025-27 be read and introduced by title and synopsis only by the city clerk.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance 2025-27. Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion to introduce? Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-27 to amend Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Use Table Amendment Vehicle Fuel Station. The synopsis is as follows. This amendment would reduce the zoning districts where the use vehicle fuel station would be allowed. The proposed amendment would allow this use as a permitted use in the mixed-use corridor zoning district only. This amendment would also remove several use-specific conditions since this is, since this use is proposed to no longer be allowed in those districts referenced.
I move that ordinance 2025-27 be adopted.
Second.
All right. Mr. Grulick, you are up again.
Thank you. So, again, as I kind of prefaced at the beginning of the overall presentation, there are several uses that we are looking to slightly reduce in the UDO use table of the districts where those are allowed. So, this particular amendment would amend the zoning districts where the use vehicle fuel station is allowed. So, we are proposing to amend the zoning use table to allow this only in the mixed-use corridor zoning district. So, as I mentioned with other presentations, you know, there are still a lot of land that is available for this use within the community that is zoned mixed-use corridor, whereas it's simply reducing the areas where those could be allowed. With this, since we are proposing to take this out of some of the zoning districts that are referenced in the use-specific standards, there are four of those use-specific standards that need to be modified to remove language referencing districts where the use is no longer allowed. So, as I mentioned, this was heard at the Plan Commission just a few weeks ago, July 14th, and they voted five-zero to forward this to you with a favorable recommendation. And so, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions about the vehicle fuel station change for the use table?
Some, a very quick question is just about whether there are any non-conforming ones and the impacts on non-conforming.
Yeah, so again, just like self-storage units, there are certainly a few of these that probably do exist in the zoning districts where we are proposing to remove those from. Those would be grandfathered. They are allowed to continue and remain. They just, just can't expand on the sites where they are now. So, by expansion, what I mean is adding new fuel pumps or expanding onto the physical building itself. It doesn't prevent... It doesn't prevent them from changing out fuel pumps, you know, if something goes bad or if they have to change out the underground tanks or something like that. It does not prevent them from remodeling the inside of the stores or doing general maintenance to the buildings or the tanks or anything like that. It just prevents adding new tanks or expanding the building.
Quick follow-up. And if they were to expand, for example, to provide more food services, would this also count as expansion?
So that's a great question. If they were expanding to add a permitted use, such as a restaurant, then that could be allowed, but they couldn't add the component that wouldn't be allowed, which is the vehicle fuel pumps.
Thank you. Other questions? I have a quick one, just for clarity. What if they wanted to add electrical charging stations?
Yep, so that would, that would be allowed because we don't look at those as separate vehicle, as the gas pumps themselves.
Okay, so that's like a separate use? It's not?
Yeah, we, yes.
It gets categorized separately? So if an existing non-conforming fuel station with this wanted to add electric charging stations, that would be allowed?
Yes, I believe so. I don't see anything that would prevent that from being expanded.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Mr. Grulick, suppose there's a transfer of ownership. Does that affect the use?
No, it does not.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? All right, not seeing other questions. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and go to public comments on Ordinance 2025-27 Vehicle Fuel Station. If there's any members of the public wishing to comment on this, if you're on Zoom, you can raise your hand or send a chat message to the host. I don't see any. Oh, there is one person in chambers. Go ahead and step forward. Please make sure that you sign in on the pad there and state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
Okay, I noticed at the College Mall, there is a brand-new charging station, probably at least a dozen for electric cars. Possibly, maybe they would. Virginia Southern. Sorry, I was writing it as I was.
That's okay.
Yeah, so it was puzzling to me because it said fuel station. I was thinking maybe they should say fossil fuel station or something like that because it's still a fueling facility. And even though this facility is not open yet at the College Mall, it's probably a good use there. It's on the backside where nobody parks anymore, really. So anyway, I thought it might be uncomplicated things if they don't have to notify everybody again that maybe they should use fossil fuel in some places instead of just fueling. That was my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, are there any hands raised on Zoom?
No.
Okay. Not seeing anybody else in chambers. We will come back to council. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Ms. Southern makes a good point, and so I looked up the definition of vehicle fuel station, and it says, "A facility limited to retail sales to the public of gasoline, biodiesel, electricity, ethanol-fuel blends, hydrogen, natural gas, or other fuels for motor vehicles." So it seems to me that it does include electrical charging stations for electric vehicles. So I wanted to go back to Mr. Grulick and see if, if there's a non-conforming prior use, and they did want to add electric charging stations, it seems like that would count as fueling.
Yeah, so we have not considered any time that a business wants to add charging stations as the use on there. That's just an ancillary use that occurs on the property that they have that. So we've dealt with this in lots of situations where certain businesses have had charging stations installed, whether it's a Tesla, you know, businesses, or churches, or other situations where you're actually, you know, required to have certain charging stations once your lot gets over a certain number of parking spaces. So it's not a separate use. You know, you still have a main use that is occurring on the property. So the electric charging stations, you know, we don't consider that a separate, we don't consider that a vehicle fuel station use in and of itself. Certainly, we can look at making sure that the UDO is clear, you know, since we're removing this use from some districts and this question's come up, you know, we'll certainly put this on the list of things to make sure that we're clear in the UDO that the installation of electric charging station is not this use in and of itself. Because certainly, we don't want to discourage that. You know, we want to promote that as much as possible. So we'll look through and if, you know, there's anything that's going to be cleaned up to make that clear, we'll certainly do that.
Yeah, I think it would need to be clarified in the definition, but I appreciate hearing that that's currently not considered equal to a gasoline pump. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other councilmember questions or follow-up? Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, following up on that, Mr. Grulick, so we don't specify where to put electric charging stations so they can occur in all districts? Is that correct?
Yes, right now, as I mentioned, you know, we have not looked at that as a separate use in any situation or apply to setback requirement for those pumps or charging stations.
Okay, so this is something for future consideration? I don't know. I mean, like you, I would like them to be much, you know, much more available for people, but I don't know if there's a downside of, you know, where they occur and so forth. So anyway, look forward to maybe that discussion sometime later.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there other last questions before we go to comments? Okay, are there any councilmember comments then related to this ordinance? Councilmember Rosenberg?
Thanks for doing this. I know Councilmember Flaherty is not here, but it's great, too, that he got the ball rolling on these things. I think it is, I mean, these are in our climate action plan, and it's neat to see us taking steps to change the UDO to reflect what residents stated as our goals. So thanks.
Thank you. Other councilmember comments? I will make a short comment that I also think that it's worth clarifying that definition of vehicle fueling station. And I also want to point out that we also have a definition for electric vehicle charging facility. And so my guess is that the definition for electric vehicle charging facility is newer than the definition for vehicle fuel station, and so it was potentially overlooked at some point that the definition for vehicle fueling station included that electricity piece. So, and I also want to clarify for the member of the public who brought this up, like, thank you for bringing this up, but also to change that definition would not require the broad mailing notice that was required for a use table change. And so that, that kind of change would just be called a text amendment and could just be done kind of in the normal course of things where it goes through the planning commission and then goes from the planning commission to here. So there are several mentions and opportunities for the public to get involved, but there's not that cost associated with mailing a letter or a postcard to every single resident. So that, that is a change that I would encourage us to, to look at, and I will commit to following up on that with planning to make sure that gets done as it's able. So unless there are other comments, will the clerk please call the roll on Ordinance
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That passes 7-0. On to the next one.
I move that Ordinance 2025-28 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to introduce Ordinance 2025-28. Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion?
Councilmember Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. And just to clarify for the public that are here, when we have a member participating via Zoom, all, all votes have to be by roll call, so that's why this is happening every time. So will a clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-28 to amend Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Use Table Amendment Vehicle Wash. The synopsis is as follows. This amendment would reduce the zoning districts where the used vehicle wash would be allowed. The proposed amendment would allow this use as a permitted use in the mixed-use corridor zoning district only.
I was waiting for more, I'm sorry.
Sorry, thank you.
Oh, I move that Ordinance 2025-28 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Grulick?
Thank you. So again, just kind of following up on, on earlier comments, you know, as we looked through the zoning code for certain uses that we felt like could be modified in terms of the zoning districts where those are allowed, vehicle washes or car washes was another one of those things that's long been on our list of things to look at and reevaluate. So as we are looking to kind of reduce the zoning districts where a lot of the automobile-oriented uses are located, vehicle wash was certainly one of those, and so we are proposing, in keeping with the other uses that we've briefly discussed, to make this a permitted use in the MC, the mixed-use corridor zoning district only. That would be the only change associated with this proposal. There are no other changes to the use-specific standards or anything that would pertain to this. So the planning commission heard this petition as well and voted 5-0 to forward this to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. And we also have an amendment on this one, and Councilmember Piedmont Smith is away from the dais, but if somebody would like to move that amendment.
I move to introduce Amendment 1 to Ordinance 2025-28.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith is not present at the moment, but I think that it's on page 35 of our packet, if you're uncertain. It is simply a replacement of the original Attachment A. I think there was just an error in putting the packet together and the wrong table got inserted as the attachment for this particular ordinance. So the amendment just inserts the correct part of the table. Are there any questions on Amendment 1 to Ordinance 2025-28? All right, seeing no questions, we'll go ahead and go to the public. So if you have any comments in the public for Amendment 1 to, excuse me, Ordinance 2025-28, replacing the, the attachment to include the correct allowed use table, can approach the podium or you can raise your hand on Zoom? Are there any comments on Zoom?
No.
Thank you very much. Coming back to council then, are there any councilmember comments related to Amendment 1? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on Amendment 1 to Ordinance 2025-28?
Yes, Councilmember Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously, so now we are back to councilmember questions on Ordinance 2025-28 as amended. So are there any questions by councilmembers for the ordinance regarding vehicle wash? Councilmember Asari?
I promise this question is not about people who fall out of the, you know, zone. The question is only somewhat relevant, well, I'm sorry. It is totally relevant so that Roberts doesn't, you know, jump up in his grave or something. There has been this question about whether or not on the East Side Crew Car Wash, why we weren't allowed to have vacuum cleaners? And I know that this, the introduction of this legislation was then talked about in the, in the press by, by the planning department, saying, oh, we're about to introduce some legislation around, you know, car washes. So could you help us? It's our first chance to talk to you this evening, no joking, but is, can you help us understand a little bit why there are no vacuums on the East Side Car Wash?
Yeah, there was nothing from the planning department or the UDO that said they could not have those. So that was something they chose on their own.
Okay, that's good to know. And then do any of these, do any of these changes, I mean, with the, with the fact that there is a, I mean, there's quite a demand for car wash. I mean, I, you know, particularly liked the Taco Bell on the East Side, but I mean, my wife is very happy that there's a car wash there. But the, it's like you have kids, you know, you need, need your cars cleaned. But are we concerned with any of these changes affecting the, the supply and affecting sort of market needs for car washes in town?
Yeah, so, yeah, again, just kind of, you know, as I touched on with some of the other ones, you know, the zoning districts where this use is allowed still is very plentiful within the city in terms of where you can have a car wash. The MC zoning district is found in a lot of places, so, you know, this use can certainly occur. You know, as I mentioned, we're just trying to slim down a little bit of some of the places where this use can occur, but there's certainly lots of areas where it can. You know, we're still working, there's one currently under construction on West Third and another one that's possibly starting right across the street from it. So there will certainly be plenty of supply of car washes.
Thank you so much, and thank you also for clarifying that it was not the city who did not put in, or did not allow for the vacuums. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to clarify that I actually contacted CBU about the vacuum question, too, and it also was not CBU, so, yeah. Are there any other councilmember questions? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and go to public comments on Ordinance 2025-28 as amended. If you're a member of the public who would like to comment on this ordinance regarding fuel wa, or vehicle wash, go ahead and approach the podium. If you're online, you can raise your hand using the reactions tab. I don't see anybody moving in chambers. Has anybody raised their hand on Zoom?
No.
Okay. I'll revert us back to council then. Are there any closing comments from councilmembers regarding Ordinance 2025-28 as amended? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on Ordinance 2025-28 as amended?
Councilmembers of the.
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes 7-0. On to the next.
I move that Ordinance 2025-29 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to introduce Ordinance 2025-29. Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion?
Councilmember Asari?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Ann Zulik?
Yes.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-29 to amend Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Use Table Amendment and Definitions Tattoo or Piercing Parlor. The synopsis is as follows. This amendment would reclassify how the used tattoo or piercing parlor is regulated and would include this as a use associated with the used personal service. This amendment would remove the specific use from the use table and other related references and standards, since it would be allowed anywhere that the used personal service is allowed.
Thank you. I move that Ordinance 2025-29 be adopted.
Second.
All right, Mr. Grulick, you're up for one last time this evening.
Thank you. So this is a minor amendment, and as opposed to all the previous ones that we've kind of been discussing tonight, you know, we are not proposing to remove this, this use or restrict the areas where it can occur. In fact, kind of, kind of the opposite. You know, this used tattoo or piercing parlor has always been just a specific defined use in the zoning code, and it's kind of an antiquated approach to this. in the zoning code, and it's kind of an antiquated approach to this use that's certainly not what is prevalent in society anymore in terms of, you know, where you can get, you know, businesses that offer this service. And so we, you know, this is something that's very common with a lot of personal service businesses, you know, to get piercings at the same time as you do other self-care things. We are proposing to redefine how this use is treated within the UDO and place this within the use personal service, and that would then allow it to be occurred in a lot more zoning districts. So you can see on the use table now, the use is only allowed in the MM and MC zoning district and the MD. By placing it or classifying it as a personal service, it allows it to be in a lot more zoning districts. So with this use, we are removing the references to tattoo or piercing parlor in numerous places within the zoning code, within the parking table, some of the use-specific restrictions, other definitions. So this is really just kind of moving where this use occurs within the UDO. So the Planning Commission heard this as well and voted 5 to 0 to send this to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Are there councilmember comments about ordinance 2025-29? Or, sorry, councilmember questions? Oh, my gosh. Questions, councilmember questions. Little on autopilot there. Not seeing any questions right now, we'll just go right to public comment. If there's a member of the public who would like to comment on ordinance 2025-29, can make your way to the podium. If you're online, you can go ahead and raise your hand. I don't see anybody moving toward the podium and chambers. Has anybody raised their hand on Zoom?
No.
Thank you very much. I think that revotes back to council. Are there any councilmember comments regarding ordinance 2025-29? Seeing none, I'll just go ahead and say thank you for making this amendment so that tattoo and piercing parlor can get treated as other small personal services are. I think that that's a move in a positive direction. So with that, if the clerk could please call the roll on ordinance 2025-29.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Thank you. Bless you.
Thank you, that motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Grulick, and the planning team for this, and the Planning Commission for these many little, small UDO amendments. Moving on.
I move that ordinance 2025-30 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance 2025-30. If the clerk could please call the roll on that motion.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-30 to vacate a public parcel regarding a 12-foot public, I'm so sorry, a 12-foot public alley adjacent to 909 East University Street. The synopsis is as follows. The petitioner, Veronica Bardiner, requests a vacation of an alley right-of-way to her that is enclosed by fencing and not currently utilized for any form of access. The alley is oriented along the northern boundary of 909 East University Street.
Thank you.
I move that ordinance 2025-30 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. So this process here in hearing this ordinance counts as the public hearing on this alley vacation, and as such, it needs to be conducted pursuant to Indiana Code 367312. So we will hear presentations first by the petitioner themselves, then by planning staff, and then the third group of presentation could be any person aggrieved by the proposed vacation who wants to object, and that those objections are limited to the following categories: questions of access, use of public ways, and the orderly development of the neighborhood or unit as a whole. Then we will have council questions, public comment, and then a vote related to the ordinance. So who is here to present for the petitioner? Thank you, if you could make sure to introduce yourself for the record, and signing in would be helpful for the clerk in terms of the spelling of your name.
Thank you very much, appreciate the introduction on the procedures, President Stasburg and members of the common council. My name is Dan Seer, I'm an attorney with Paganelli Law Group in Bloomington, and I'm representing petitioner Veronica Bardoner for the petition as mentioned. The alley is oriented along the northern boundary of 909 East University Street and is within the Elm Heights Historic District. This neighborhood is about seven or eight lots wide for that block. A petition to vacate begins with the city council, as mentioned, so this was not previously heard by the Planning Commission or the BZA, so we appreciate the council's time on the initial hearing. As an overview of what I'll briefly try to touch on is the alley itself, giving you some pictures, showing you the access routes. As mentioned in the statute, there's some mandatory objections, and those are not met by anything in this petition. As far as, it doesn't block off any access to public building, it doesn't block off access to any public road, and we'll go into those in a little bit more detail with the history and the legal framework for this proceeding. We'll show you some pictures about the alley restoration efforts by the petitioner because we think that's part of the beneficial use, and also showing you that there's no future public use of this alley. We'll have some comments on the draft ordinance and some benefits that we think for the city. Here at the picture on the right side, there's a label for the petitioner's property, so you're seeing there a garage near the north end of the property. It's a garage in the backyard, and this picture's taken from the 15-foot-wide public alley, but the alley we're seeking to vacate is 12 feet wide. It remains enclosed, has remained enclosed for, we believe, up to 40 years of similar use to this. And then the adjacent property owner at 910 East Second Street has a fence that partially encloses said alley. And so that's where we show you in blue, this may be hard on this screen, but we do want to emphasize that the 15-foot public alley does facilitate various modes of transport. Vacating the alley in question does not impact any pedestrian transit, it's not used for a walkway or pedestrian. Imagine this as an alley that has essentially encroachments across it throughout the entire neighborhood. It's not, never been used as a public alley as far as we can see. So it does not impede any service vehicles or emergency access, there's been no responses from fire or anybody else other than utilities. There's some overhead utilities regarding utilities, we can get more into that. It does not, this will not limit any parking access. And quickly reviewing here the points in the packet, we started with the city Bloomington Resolution 87-2. This outlines some extra criteria that Bloomington applies to the state statute, and so that's where we analyze some of those in our submissions. And the notice to the property owners, we filed that even before the petition, we did contact all neighboring property owners to request any comments. I don't mind any questions, but I understand if you want to stick with the order.
The law says so.
I'm so sorry.
It was sent out in a packet and, uh...
That's what I was trying to say.
Yes, and it's really just more of an index, it's our draft ordinance and the memo from the council, so that may not be necessary. Sorry, I hope you're not missing too much there. As far as the past review, we found approximately 70 ordinances where the city has used this resolution to vacate alleys for all kinds of different reasons, and we supplied just a sample of some of the ordinances that we found, going back over the years. They're typically titled to vacate a public parcel. And I do want to, that's why we wanted to review. It's not super common, but it has, of course, been received by the city council, and these have been approved. This image shows the black walnut tree, this is part of a longer process of just trying to improve the backyard, going through the Historic Preservation Commission, receive a certificate of appropriation to have that tree removed, it was causing all sorts of problems, and that our client paid for that, of course, and these are just part of the contributions, and trying to propose the beneficial use to this property and putting it back into private ownership. So that black walnut tree was 32 inches in diameter, and it's no longer there. This is sort of a before and after, want to give you an overview of some of the investments and maintenance that has been done, so we're just hoping to continue that with the alley being vacated. This is part of the genesis of the problem, just generally trying to avoid these fences that are encroaching into the public alley, removing that debris. Petitioner has, of course, incurred the costs, going through the city process with the Historic Preservation Commission. We would like to be able to install an in-kind replica of the historic fence. The issue there, I think if you can picture it, I'll show you later, is that the historic preservation, of course, cannot authorize us to put a fence into the alley, and so they would like the fence to be up to the garage, which is sort of difficult and creates a practical problem, can't maintain the garage or clean gutters, or it would impede actual parts of the petitioner's property. So much of this is hopefully just the last part in a process of trying to clear up this alley and what we think would be a good public benefit, all following, of course, the historic district guidelines with regard to any improvements, and the planning memo does highlight some of those effects. This is just another angle of the ongoing fence and the history of tax payments on the petitioner's property and sort of the history of tax delinquencies and noncompliance on the adjoining property owner. You can see it there. So just an overall issue, it would be best, we think, to put this land back into private ownership. It previously was private ownership, of course, before it was dedicated. We do think it will have all of these enhanced benefits that are on the screen, and as far as we can tell, no negatives. I think your major concern would be access, but with the adjacent public alleys, a 15-foot alley on the west side of the parcel, there's hardly, we can't see any real impact of vacating the alley to the public. And so as you will see in the plan, Planning Department, Planning and Transportation Department's submission and correlating with the state statute and the city criteria, they identify, as far as we can tell, only one potential concern is that it might impact future use. We think that is a very minimal objection. We think that the alley has been enclosed for 40 years, it's too narrow to allow any future bike path or pedestrian path. It's fenced in and there's already, we think lawful nonconforming structures that already block portions of the alley, it's a low-traffic residential zone. So we think the limited or no public use concerns there. So we had some additional proposals for the ordinance, we just want you to see them, we understand we've worked closely with, of course, the county attorney on drafting that ordinance, but we did have some additional findings for you to consider. Briefly just saying, we complied with the city resolution on it, and we don't have any, there's no objection that violates that criteria. CenterPoint Energy has no objection to the petition, and Duke Energy is not opposing vacation of the alley. They, of course, would request that their easements be protected, and they would request some customary findings. We, of course, would like to review those, but no major problem with what the public utility needs at Duke Energy for the overhead lines. So nearing the end here, you've seen these before, we thank you for considering the petition, look forward to answering any questions, we do think this is good policy and would continue to allow the petitioner to enhance her property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on in the hearing section, now we'll hear from planning staff, if you could make sure to introduce yourself for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Jackie Scanlon, Assistant Director, Planning and Transportation. All right, so you received our memo, I'll just briefly go over it if that's all right and add a couple of things. Okay, so as Mr. Seer described, the petition is for a request of a portion of an alley that is north of 909 East University Street. It's roughly about 708 square feet between 909 and the property to the north, which is 912 East Second. We did hear back from CenterPoint, they did not have an objection. Duke, as Mr. Seer described, requested an easement, and City of Bloomington Utilities objected to the vacation. The petitioner is requesting something slightly different than most of the vacations council sees, which is vacation in full ownership of the vacated 12-foot right-of-way. Typically, when vacation requests are seen, the right-of-way is split equally between both adjacent property owners. And in your packet you received, there was some information from the owners of 912 East Second, as well as from a representative from, of those property owners, that they would prefer to receive six feet if you are to approve the vacation, as is the common practice, otherwise they request that you deny the request. So a couple of things, the petitioner submitted in their packet seven examples of previous vacations, we wanted to point out that the most recent one is 29 years old. It has not been the practice of council in some time to approve right-of-way vacations in residential areas, largely for the reason that Mr. Seer mentioned, which is potential future use. So 12 feet wide is wide enough for a path if we were to want to do that in the future. We have paths that are eight or 10 feet wide here in Bloomington, and so we would typically request that right-of-way be maintained for those potential future connections. Additionally, with the request for denial from City of Bloomington Utilities, that is something that they could use that right-of-way in the future if there were some need. So for example, further west in this same neighborhood, there are east-west alleys that are not improved, that are 12 feet wide, that are used largely by those neighbors and neighborhoods as pedestrian connections. Again, this alley is not being used that way at this time on this block because it is blocked off by fences on almost the entirety of this block, but as the city in the future or now, we could request that those encroachments be removed and allow that space to be used by more people than just the adjacent property owners, which is, again, improved alleys, or, excuse me, unimproved alleys further to the west that are being used by pedestrians and do have some City of Bloomington Utility infrastructure in them, so something that could be done here in the future. Okay, I just want to make sure I get all my notes here. So the issue appears to be, so in the fall of 2022, the petitioner started asking the city about removing a large black walnut tree that was in the right-of-way because they were doing work on their garage and weren't able to get a warranty for that work because of how close the walnut tree was to that structure. So went to the HPC, asked to have it removed, it is part of a local historic district, and I believe that was denied the first time. So then the petitioner worked with a number of arborists in town, as well as Haskell Smith, who's the current urban forester, about the health of the tree and would it be okay to remove it, and got permission to approve it, excuse me, remove it, as I mentioned in the memo with COA 2355, to take it down. So the HPC did eventually approve that they could remove that tree. They also requested at that time to fix the fence that you saw in one of the last pictures Mr. Seer showed, which was in the alley. So it was on property they do not own, and so the HPC said that the, you know, he mentioned that it would be in-kind, so the HPC actually determined that it wasn't the same fence, but it was very similar, and that they would let them go forward with that design, but it would have to be on their own property, which makes sense that they're approving for them to build on their own property, not city property. They have not apparently gone forward with that based on the pictures that have been submitted, but do have an approval to do that. So again, as they pointed out, encroachments into this particular alleyway, especially on this block, are common. It's not actually even clear that the garage on 912 East Second isn't encroaching. When you look at the survey that was submitted by the petitioner, and this is all they needed to do, was describe the legal area of the alley, but oftentimes when there are structures close to those areas, those will be cited as well. So their garage is on the survey, but the neighboring garage is not, and if you measure the separation, they don't appear to be much more than 12 feet apart, and so it's unclear that that garage isn't actually already encroaching. So the neighbors to the north also have a fence, so if you were to approve the vacation and give the entirety of the 12 feet to Dr. Bardiner, then what would that do with the improvements that the neighbor to the north has put on this property as well in the public right-of-way? What would happen to that property? Excuse me, to those improvements. So I mentioned here a little, another issue that could be created in the fourth paragraph in the memo. If you vacate the full 12 feet, then now you, they can put a fence at that 12-foot line. And that is, would be 12 feet closer, obviously, than now to the existing accessory structure to the north. So when that accessory structure went in, I'm sure a long time ago, you know, there was an expectation that there was a separation there. There's a platted alley there. So instead of splitting, like you would in a normal vacation situation, they're asking to retain all of the 12 feet and now they've got their neighbor's fence 12 feet closer to their property than anyone could have expected previously. So that's just something to consider. That also means that any new structures or expansion of that garage that can be built can be built much closer to the existing garage of the neighbor as well if the vacation is approved. So I just wanted to address a couple of the specific findings from the petitioner. The tax revenue increase on this would be minimal. It's a 708-square-foot area. The liability here in this alleyway is no greater than in any other alley location in the city. And obviously, we have lots and lots of miles of unimproved alleys that people use, have encroached in, that we don't go in and do enforcement on. We let people to continue to use as we did in this situation until the fence came down. The municipal costs, again, are minimal at this location for the city, for the existing situation. Doing the vacation doesn't support historic preservation in this area, as mentioned by the petitioner. The historic preservation pattern is alleys, unimproved or not. I think that is also evident by the fact that the BHPC, Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission, said they could rebuild the fence on their own property, that the retention of that alley was important. It's interesting that the petitioner talked about when, that it used to be private ownership, because I'm pretty sure this is part of a subdivision that is more than 100 years old. I mean, this house is almost more than 100 years old. Per county records, it was built in 1929, which means the lot was there before that, and so was the platted alley. So though improvements may have been in it for the last 40 years, the alley, the actual platted alley in potential public use have been there for much longer. So again, if the city would like additional pedestrian connection here, we can compel removal of any items in the right-of-way. There's a definite public use opportunity for pedestrian and utility use in the future, even if vehicular access is not needed at this particular site. So for those reasons, the department has recommended that you deny the request for the vacation and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. And so then carrying on with the hearing, the next presentation is any person aggrieved by the proposed vacation who wants to object. And I'm going to, again, note that the objections are limited to the following categories: questions of access, use of public ways, and the orderly development of the neighborhood or unit as a whole. So if you think that you are a person aggrieved by this vacation and you want to object to it, and I see somebody standing, so apparently there's somebody in the room. If you could go ahead and approach and first introduce yourself and why you fall into this very specific category of aggrieved. And I also want to mention at this point, there's also a separate period just for general public comment by any individual as opposed to somebody specifically aggrieved. So please go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Boor from Clendenin Johnson &amp; Boor, and I'm here to represent Tim Miller and Jenny Southern, who own the property at 910 East Second Street. It's legally described as Merkers Lot 17. It adjoins the alley which is being asked to be vacated. Dr. Bardoner has proposed that the entire alley be vacated to her. And so this alley adjoins the property owned by my clients. Typically, as was just mentioned, the alley would be vacated one half to each of the adjoining owners, but that's not what's being asked of you this evening by Dr. Bardoner. She's being asked that the entire alleyway be vacated to her, and that's what we object to. The 70 ordinances that have been cited to you by her attorney, many of them are very, very old. And I'd also point out that many of them, the owner of the property was the owner of both parcels on either side of the alley and that the owner was going to erect a new structure. And that's what was preventing the erection of the new structure was the vacation of the alley. That's not the case in this case, in either situation. Dr. Bardoner does not own both sides of the alley and is not going to erect anything but a fence. In this case, the alley vacation will restrict my client's access to their garage. And so that is why it is imperative that you not grant this petition. Their garage has access from the existing alleyway. And if you grant this, it will make it more difficult or inconvenient for my clients to access their property. That in and of itself is a valid reason to deny this petition as it's been presented to you to give Dr. Bardoner the entire alleyway. And that is enough reason, under Indiana Code 367312, to deny this petition as it's been presented to you. So I would also mention that Dr. Bardoner could build the fence the way she would like, but she just doesn't want to. She'd like to build it out into the alleyway. She just doesn't want to build it onto her property as close to her garage as she'd like. So please deny this ordinance. As it's been presented to you, it will restrict access to my client's property. That in and of itself is enough reason, under the Indiana Code, to deny it. And as you've heard from your planning staff and also from the Utilities Department, they do not want this to be granted as it's been presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other persons that consider themselves aggrieved persons regarding this ordinance? Has anybody raised their hand on Zoom regarding being an aggrieved person?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. So not seeing anybody else move forward as an aggrieved person wanting to make a presentation, we are then to counsel questions. So counsel members, who has questions related to this ordinance? Okay, I'm surprised that there are absolutely no questions. So, oh, Councilmember Daly.
Sorry, thank you very much. My question is for Attorney Seer. You mentioned in your presentation that this alleyway was not wide enough for a pedestrian or bicycle path, which according to NACTO Urban Bike Way Design Guide, a width of at least 10 feet is often recommended for bike paths and much less for pedestrians. So how do you come to your conclusion that it is not wide enough?
It's a good question. Thank you, Councilmember Daly. The adjacent property owner's garage has not been surveyed. So I think there is maybe some agreement that we don't know the exact distance between those two. We don't think it is very wide for that proper use. It certainly wouldn't be good for vehicle traffic. And it has overhead power lines. So additionally, there are encroaching structures. So in order to make a passable pedestrian pathway, there would have to be numerous structures that would have to be looked at that could be within that pathway. And essentially, that is the focus of our response to the width of the alley. It's not been measured and we would have to go along the entire block. And it's also noticeable that there's already a public walkway and a vehicle alley on the west side of the parcel. And so it would be extremely limited use if there were going to be clearing for a pedestrian pathway. If that makes sense, there's already sidewalks on both sides of the houses. And so it would be minimal and seems unlikely to us. I can't stand here before you and say that it's impossible that the city could not turn that into something, but it seems highly unlikely and would have pretty limited benefit to the city or the users because there's only seven or eight houses wide.
Are there other council member questions? Councilmember Ralu.
Sorry. Yes, a question for planning. If it's going to restrict access to Mr. Mueller and Ms. Southern's residence, I mean, this seems to be problematic, perhaps unfair. Isn't it better that we consider an alternative proposal that would be equally split? Because I don't want to favor one resident versus another if, you know, we are surrendering, vacating this alley that both of them have been adjacent to for decades.
Good question. Jackie Scanlon, Assistant Director, Planning and Transportation. Yeah, I mean, our recommendation is that you don't approve the vacation at all. If you were to approve it, we would prefer that you do the split. I mean, even as Attorney Seer just noted, they don't actually know where the accessory structure on the northern property is. It could be in the alley. So vacating the alley without knowing that and giving the full 12 feet to the south property owner, I think, could be problematic. We don't think you should vacate it at all. But if you do, I, yes, think the preference would be six and six.
But your preference will be to deny?
Correct.
That's, okay. So, very good. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Are there other council member questions? Councilmember Sari.
Thanks so much. Question for, I think, the petitioner most appropriately. But the thing that's somewhat unclear to me is what is it? What is it that you're trying to solve? Like, what is the outcome? I get the outcome that we want, the end goal that you want, but I don't see the problem from the petitioner's position.
So I think as best summarized in the history of what the petitioner has been trying to accomplish is improving the use of the backyard. And these accessory structures, in order to get a roof on it, had to get a tree down, went through the approval process for that. But the most that she could get from the HPC is a fence that is at the corner of the accessory structure. So she would be basically giving up part of her property to put in a fence. And so that seems not preferable to locate the fence at the corner of the garage because that isn't even the property line. She wishes to be able to put the fence on the property line, but if it's there, it's, you can't get around the garage.
So can I ask a follow-up question? Would I be correct to characterize this as a step of last resort, having looked at other options?
I would definitely agree with that this is the next step and hopefully the last step in the process.
And so, I mean, so I guess the core question is, what are other options? Like, what are other potential ways of solving this problem that don't involve vacating an alley?
Well, I don't know that there are any.
Okay, so at its core, at its core, the petitioner is concerned that they'll lose some space if they put in a fence?
I would say it slightly differently, but it is, that is the genesis of the concern, the ability to put in an in-kind fence on the north end of the property. In the current location, given the city's right to the right-of-way, we can't put it in a very good spot. So it presents a practical issue and we think that there's, we've gone over our position already, so I don't want to make you hear it again, but, you know, we don't think there's a real harm here and we think that this is a good candidate for a vacation so that we can get a better use of this part of the property.
Thanks. I might have some follow-ups, but I'll let somebody else ask a question. Thank you.
Other council member questions? Councilmembers, you look.
Thank you. I have a question for the petitioner as well. If this is a question about just the property line and the fence, why, what's the motivation behind requesting the entire alley and not requesting to split it with the other property owner?
Thank you for the opportunity to ask about it. I think it's more of a question of fairness toward going through the cost of incurring the cost of removing the black walnut tree entirely on petitioner and the cost of a survey and other costs, of course, just throughout the process. And so it doesn't feel fair to give both sides of it the same benefit when only the petitioner has been essentially coming to you and asking you to vacate it. So you may disagree, but that is essentially, it feels unfair to benefit both property owners when both of them don't go in on trying to support the process and improve the property, such as through the HPC. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there council member questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I'm not sure who's best positioned to answer this, but because Mr. Seer said the petitioner has spent money on the tree removal, I wanted to ask whether our urban forester has actually said that the tree needed to be removed, which I know the answer to because I emailed him, but I want to get it out there in public because if somebody's going to claim credit, so to speak, for undergoing the cost of removing a tree, is that tree just removed because the petitioner didn't want it? Or because it structurally had to be removed?
Okay, I'll tell you what I know, which is a piece to get there. I watched the old Preservation Commission meetings to try to figure out what was going on at this location. And then Mr. Seer can correct me. But I believe that their request was approved kind of begrudgingly. As I said, I believe there was an initial request that was denied. And then more arborists were involved. And I don't think it was, the email that I saw from Mr. Smith indicated that he could see why they would want it taken down as far as like there was some potential health issues. But it was definitely, he thought at that time that it could stay. And then they didn't end up getting the approval for another year. So I don't know if that situation changed after that. Does that make sense? Sorry. The email that I saw from the urban forester in 2022 indicated that he could see that it was unhealthy, but he was not willing to say that it needed to come down at that time. And then they worked with him some more after that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Daly.
Thank you, Ms. Scanlon. To follow up on that, is that why the petitioner paid for the cost of the removal? Because, why did the city not pay for the cost of the removal? Was it because they were not wanting it taken down?
Yeah, I believe because it was the petitioner's request, right? So they were indicating that there was a tree in the right-of-way that they wanted to take down for reasons, which I believe, as I mentioned, I believe it was a re-roofing of the accessory structure and then there were issues getting warranty on that because of how close the tree was. And so, yes, when you request something from the city, you are the one who typically pays for it. So, you know, like some of the other things that were listed in the packet were like paying for this right-of-way vacation or paying for a survey. Like, if you're going to request a petition, you pay for all of the stuff. Right.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. That's helpful.
Are there other council member questions? Councilmember Sari, did you indicate that you had a round two or a follow-up or something? Do you still have that?
Probably should for good measure to the petitioner. You referenced Resolution 8702 that establishes a clear, I think, guidelines, additional guidelines that we've set up as a city council to make these type of decisions. And one of those is this, I mean, we might think of it as like a public need test or something like that. And so I'd love to hear your position on how this meets public need. I think we've heard a clear position on particularly that underlying. There's one element of that, which is, you know, future use is sort of a disqualifying factor. So how do you see this as meeting that public need test?
Sure. Thank you for the question. And at the present time, it doesn't essentially have any use. And we do think it would be have any use. And we do think it would be improved by the continued better maintenance of it. For lack of a better term, the city doesn't maintain these. And so by allowing a private property owner to have ownership of it, it generally would improve the growth and value of the properties if you allow them to be, you know, selectively expanded. I know it's not much we're talking about, as Ms. Scanlon pointed out. So I think that has a benefit. I know that there's a lot of ways to look at that. But allowing something that doesn't get taken care of, essentially, to be put into private ownership does have a benefit for the overall neighborhood. I think you could see, we could see the ripple effects through that.
I get it. I mean, my initial question, right, is that, so if the city cleaned up the alley, does that solve the problem?
I don't think that they would do that across the unapproved alleys across the city. And so we're just hard pressed to...
But this is where, I mean, if, I mean, the question is hypothetical. I get it. So, I mean, but, so take it at face value. If the city did do that, would the petitioner be happy? I mean, because if the argument rests on the fact that private ownership would take care of the alley, but we're not going to have an alley anymore, and so the person's going to put the fence and enclose that alley. I mean, but then your argument is that it's going to be of public benefit because it's going to add value to that, to those properties. So the question that I asked was, what are all alternatives? And so, so I'd love just a little bit for us to deal with, like, what other things could be done here? Because otherwise, the argument that's being presented is simply that the petitioner wants a little bit more land and we should facilitate that.
Well, as previously discussed about the tree problem and the location of the fence and the structure that's there, the tree caused a problem. And whether they want to, you know, they don't want to remove trees as a matter of course. No one does. But it was necessary to preserve damage from being caused by the tree in this case and being able to get a roof replaced and get a warranty. That's a general, that is a private benefit, but that kind of policy is good. And so with the lot lines essentially as they are now, the structure won't be able to be taken care of as well, for the same reasons as you got a private property owner coming before the commission to get a tree removal and to be able to pay for that. So it does, it complicates things, I think, when people cannot improve what is largely acknowledged, seen, taken over by encroachments and things like that. And so we just don't think that that type of area is good and that we acknowledge the value of alleys, but not always. And I think especially when there's already a 15-foot alley to the side, that's just a balancing. It's a balancing. It's hard to do.
And my final question on this is that why does a 50-50 split not satisfy that need?
I don't have anything else to add. I'm really sorry. It's generally just the way that our client is, the petitioner, taking care of the property and just the benefit that that would provide. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Are there other council member questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next stage of the public hearing, which is public comment. If there are any members of the public who wish to comment on this matter, you can go ahead and approach the podium if you're in chambers or raise your hand if you're online. And then you would have three minutes to speak. I don't see anybody moving in chambers. Do we have any hands raised on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Zoom commenter. If, when you're unmuted, you can go ahead. Please introduce yourself, stating your name for the record. And then you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Paul Rousseau. I'm surprised I'm the only one to speak out. It seems like a really easy call for you to make to agree with the planning commission, I mean, the planning department, excuse me, and deny the request. Because I see a public cost in a historic district and a right-of-way that has existed for over a century, and all for basically a private benefit having to do with tree removal. It just doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Anybody else raised a hand on Zoom?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. So that brings us back to council member comments. And I would like to take this moment, and I've been meaning to remind us all of this, but last year, as a council, we passed a limit on this comment and debate portion. If you guys remember that, it was before our current staff was our current staff. And so I've been meaning to bring that back and go, hey, by the way. So it limits us to twice upon a question in terms of comment. The first comment has a maximum of five minutes and then the second comment, a maximum of two minutes. So in terms of timers, we also set those time limits upon ourselves. And I wanted to remind our staff of that. So, because now I'm going to ask council members for any comments on this matter. And I see Councilmember Rallo's hand raised, and I just want to make sure our staff have the timer all set. We all set? Great. Councilmember Rallo, go ahead.
Thank you, President Stasburg. Well, the removal of the tree may have been a benefit to the petitioner, but I'm not convinced that it was a benefit to the city or the public. So that's moot to me. And while it may be good or benign to vacate the alley, since it seems to have no utility for pedestrians or public access and so forth, in principle, I don't have an objection to the vacation per se. But I do have an objection to benefiting one resident versus another, benefiting one while restricting access of the other. I think it sets a bad precedent, frankly. So if this were to come back with an even split, then I would certainly be probably favorable. Unless I hear something in the meantime from constituents, but I'll be voting no, I'll be voting to deny the petition on those grounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other council member comments? Councilmember Asari?
Thank you. You know, in these type of cases, I always, especially when things are brought to us directly from members of the public.
Sorry, can this happen?
Don't worry, I was not going to take five minutes, I promise.
That's okay.
I will speak just a little slower now. You know, when things are brought to us from members of the public, I think that first and foremost, thank you for bringing them to us. I think that everybody, you know, deserves to have the full hearing and let us question and, you know, do, you know, give due process, if you will, to the conversation. But, you know, we have a criterion that we have to follow. And it was mentioned by the petitioner's lawyer. And there's sort of three issues that I have with it. The first one is that it says very clearly that we have a criterion that this should be for the necessity for the growth of the city. And so we're directed to consider the future potential for public utilization, possible future need for the right-of-way due to future changes in land use. And in this case, I think we have a clear statement from the city utilities, you know, both in terms of some unknowns, but just saying that they oppose the vacation on this basis. I think that it signals some unresolved future public need and that there are active utilities in the corridor and vacating the right-of-way could limit access for future maintenance or upgrades. And we didn't have enough, I don't think, evidence that any type of aneezement or something like that would sort of solve that. There's also this need for us to have this compliance with regulations that's mentioned very clearly there. And one of the things that was presented by both arguing sides was that, in fact, this vacation would present an issue with compliance in that it would put two structures closer to each other than would be allowed in our code. And then generally also, I think, staff that pointed out, our wonderful planning staff, and thank you for taking so much time and being, also, just also thank you to the petitioner for being so patient with all of this. But I think that they pointed out that this is, aside from being part of a historical district, that there is connectivity with this alley to other broader networks that are part of our comprehensive plans, et cetera. And so for these reasons collectively, I can't vote any other way than no for this vacation, as much as I appreciate the fact that it was brought by you. And, you know, apologies for not being able to support your needs, but I'm going to have to vote no on this.
Thank you. Are there other council member comments? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Hi, thank you so much. Thank you for everyone who is here tonight. I have some bullet points. What am I, five minutes? Okay. And I'm just going to kind of go for that. I do want to say, and I don't think we've talked about it tonight, that you can use an alley that is not yours and is not currently in use. So my neighbor has a garage that encroaches on the alley. And I think if the city ever wanted that alley, she would have to tear down the garage or move it a few feet. And that is an option. And I think a lot of people do choose to build something in an alley that's not getting used. I'm not saying everyone should go, well, you can't build a house in an alley, but that, like, it's a little bit of your own risk, I think, and how much you want to use it for your own good and benefit that might one day be taken away. But I don't know what you plan to do for the alley, but I do think potentially maybe you can do it as it is, a public space. One thing we didn't talk about too, really, is we talked only really about the alley vacation. But in our city code, if you don't have access to an alley, like, you are allowed to request a curb cut on the street for a driveway for your car. And that takes away, like, very much on-demand, on-street parking. And curb cuts with driveways or drive cuts are just adding danger for everyone involved, drivers, people on bikes, and pedestrians. So I do think there's a lot that we didn't even get to tonight about, like, what then becomes allowed for someone who doesn't have alley access. I did look up a little bit about alleys. They've been, when we were talking about historic preservation, it sounds like they've been around since as early as 432 B.C. in Greek cities. So in the very beginning, they were building streets and they were building alleys, which is a really neat thing and very much, I think, prohistoric preservation. I think too, Councilmember Daly mentioned Natco and multi-use paths, but Natco also has so many articles about how awesome alleys are and how cities are creating these huge projects to, like, bring alleys back to life as places for green space and gardens and for kids playing and storage of, right, like, waste and cars and things that maybe you don't want to have cluttering the streets. A neat example also of an alley that grew up to be a street here in Bloomington is in my neighborhood, Prospect Hill. And it started as an alley, and now it's a street. And it gets to have homes on it. So there are at least seven houses that are on their own properties that front the alley or street. And it's adding much-needed density in small lots to Prospect Hill that would otherwise not be allowed under our code. So I like taking alleys that direction. I think too, about alleys that might not be in use for, like, traditional purposes, but some of my friends here collect what they call alley fruit. And they go around with, just like wild, there are wild fruit bushes and trees all over the place. Like, I have a pawpaw tree in my back alley, and people take the pawpaws. And I have a persimmon tree that people just take the persimmons. And there are like blackberries around. And it's just really neat that you can get this kind of, like, urban agriculture a little bit, like, or like really local fruit from our alley system. I think too, just that Councilmember Asari did talk about this, that it's really hard to get something like an alley back if we were to make it a public, a private space. And it actually might be impossible to get back. So it is, I think, for me saying, I'm going to be here some more years, but not forever. And like, maybe that alley should be because people might have big plans for it. A city might have big plans for it later on, especially if we're looking at alleys from 432 B.C. I would also say, history shows that the city is not in the practice of vacating alleys for private use and uses that do not benefit the public. As the petition notes, we have done a few alley vacations and those ended in 1996. So it's been about 30 years, it looks like, since we did grant a vacation for a private use like this. And I think then, if the city for some reason is interested in vacating alleys, it should be a whole systems approach. And we should look at all of our alleys and what is used and what isn't, and what might be better uses for them if we would like to do that. So I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other council member comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I will be voting no for the reasons some of my colleagues have already mentioned. I see no public benefit to vacating this alley, and it could in the future be a detriment to the development of the city. I also recognize the impact on garage access for the property owner at 910 West Second Street, which is problematic. I find the whole framing of this question to be somewhat disturbing to me because it, the arguments have been made based on so-called payment or investment by the petitioner, including the tree removal at $6,500. But it was removed because the petitioner wanted it to be removed. It was not removed because it had to be removed. My communications with Haskell Smith, the urban forester, were that he wanted to do a future root analysis, a further root analysis. And then he said, you know, there could have been ways to mitigate damage to the structure that was near the tree, but that the petitioner wanted to go ahead and have it removed. Well, that is the petitioner's... Oh, there seems to be some... Is anybody speaking somewhere? Okay, anyway. So I find it disingenuous to say, oh, this petitioner has invested so much already. Well, it was their choice. Furthermore, it disturbs me that this petitioner has brought as some kind of evidence that they have always paid their property taxes on time as opposed to the other property owner. This is totally unnecessary, and it's unfair, and it's, it just seems like throwing your neighbor under the bus seems to be the modus operandi here, which I totally disapprove of. There are many reasons why somebody may be late with paying property taxes. They shouldn't be judged for that. So just the whole thing leaves a bad taste in my mouth. But just on the legal merits, I think I have to vote no.
Thank you. Are there other council member comments?
All right, I'll go ahead and make a comment. My colleagues have shared many things that I've also been thinking, but there's a couple of things that I want to mention in addition to what they've shared, one of which is, just generally speaking, if we vacate this one end of an alley, then we have a dead-end alley. And I think that that's especially kind of a misuse of publicly. And I think a dead-end alley is especially not useful. So if we want to consider vacating this alley, I think that then it needs to be a broader look at the whole alley, which Councilmember Rosenbarger kind of mentioned, as kind of like this larger plan on vacating alleys. And that is not here. So I find that problematic. Secondly, I also just want to second what Councilmember Piedmont Smith was mentioning in terms of some of that evidence and some of this presentation, I just think is kind of in poor taste in terms of how it was sent out in the packet and presented on the screen. And that also leaves kind of a bad and nasty taste in my mouth and the idea of going like, okay, I just want you, public entity, to give me 760 square feet of property. And that's essentially what this ask is. This is saying, hey, I would like you to give me property. And that's not the way property... And that's not the way property transfers tend to work in this country if we want to acquire more property. Usually, we have to buy it. And so to be a public entity that then is just going to gift it to an individual, it feels just really wrong to me. And lastly, I want to highlight a piece of our transportation plan that was adopted in 2019, and this paragraph can be found on page 51 of that transportation plan. It says, "Bloomington has many unimproved alleyways throughout the city. Bloomington should consider investing in improving targeted alleyways as a tool for redevelopment and improved urban design. Additionally, Bloomington should require that alleyways are improved by developers where feasible. Based on the many benefits of alleyways, Bloomington should work to preserve and not vacate its alleyways." So honestly, once I read that with regard to, like, my research into Bloomington vacating alleyways, I was just like, yeah, I mean, we have these plans made in 2019 that basically say we shouldn't vacate alleyways unless, like, we just shouldn't vacate alleyways, unless there are real special circumstances attached to it. So I will also be voting no on this this evening. So I think that that's the last councilmember comment. So will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 20... Oh, Councilmember Asari, and as a reminder, that's a two-minute...
Now, I'll take my three, my two minutes. I just want to say one thing that, you know, I mean, maybe to all of us that when, because of the format of our debates and the way that, you know, we get the final word, I don't think that it's appropriate for us to, you know, speak on the intentions or, you know, approaches of the petitioner who is a resident of Bloomington. I think that we should really, as we wouldn't ourselves to each other, we are, at least we could be called to order for doing so, I really don't think that we should, you know, be addressing the petitioner in that way. And so again, I mean, I think that we've said clear arguments for, you know, our position here, but I don't think that it's appropriate for the petitioner to have to go through us telling them, you know, how we feel about their personal motivations or anything like that. And so I just, you know, on behalf of, and I know that wasn't the, I'm not assuming that that was the intention, but, you know, just sitting here having to hear it, if that was the way that it was received, apologies. And certainly anybody who has to come before us should not feel like we're going to, you know, talk down at you or talk at you or anything like that, because again, you're not going to get to say anything when we're done. And so, I mean, just speaking personally, that's not my intention. Personally, my hope is just to say, look, this is what, these are our rules, and this is how we have to make our decisions. And so based on that, that's how I'll be voting, but, you know, certainly no, you know, disparaging on your motivations. I think you have every right to come and ask for your rights and your interests to be respected. And, you know, we represent you, and we want to make sure that you have every opportunity to have the best life you can in Bloomington. So even though we might disagree on this case, you know, it certainly is no disrespect to you personally.
Other comments? I guess I'll take my two-minute rebuttal to that too, just kind of in the spirit of conversation about it, in the spirit of my own intention, that, and just, I suppose, in the spirit of who I am as a person, is I appreciate, like, honest feedback, and so part of my honest feedback is the presentation of this just felt a little bit ugly, and that's perhaps not your, that was perhaps not the petitioner intention, and I'm not trying to imply that that was the petitioner intention, but that that is maybe how it came off. And I also want to take this opportunity to highlight once again our rules for making public comment, which we had amended earlier this evening, and that the last rule of public comment does encourage civility and refraining from personal attacks against private individuals. And so when I first went through that slideshow, I was like, wow, we're really bordering on something really personal against a private individual of the city. And so that was kind of, I'll say, like, a tricky thing for me to navigate, going, well, but it's a presentation time, not a public comment time, so like, how does that, like, work with our rules? And it doesn't say that you can't do those things, it's that we encourage those things because there's a whole freedom of speech piece, but I just wanted to share that that was how, like, I received some of this information, whether or not you intended it, and that is actually a conversation that I, as a parent, in my last 35 seconds happen, you know, this happens all the time when you have kids, right, is your kids don't realize quite how they're sounding, and that that's a part of learning and growing, is to recognize, oh, I sounded a little bit harsh there. And I think that as grownups, we still sometimes have that problem, and I'll own that sometimes I have that problem too, which is sometimes why I try to preface things and be like, I know sometimes I'm just, like, blunt and get to the point, but that's just who I am as a person, and I'll take that back from y'all too. So, anyway, thank you very much. Any other last comments? All right, seeing none. Now, will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 202530? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
No.
Stossberg?
No.
Daly?
No.
Zulik?
No.
Asari?
No.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Rala?
No.
Thank you. Great, thank you. So that ordinance fails 07. Now we have moved on to the additional public comment period for our evening, so if there's any members of the public who wish to make additional public comment on items not on our agenda tonight, who did not speak during the first period of public comment, now is the time to either move to the podium or to raise your hand on Zoom. I see lots of people moving, but I don't think any of them are moving to the podium for additional public comments, so if you are, you need to give me a really big wave. Are there any hands raised on Zoom for public comment?
Yes, we have one.
Great, thank you. When you're unmuted, please state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
So they send us directly through chat, so I'm going to read it right now.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Maybe I should time myself?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless it's really short and you know you don't have to.
So for a city council member to review, per city, when describing work experience, general internship, seasonal jobs, and temporary part-time positions with city as well as internship and volunteer work outside the city are not included, how is that ethical or correct in any capacity? Paid labor, whether seasonal or part-time, is just that labor work experience. This notion clearly shows bias towards those with the privilege and advantage of not having to work part-time to attain degrees, certification, et cetera. In order to finalize, attain a full-time role, how is one supposed to gain experience if means of getting experience, internship, part-time, or otherwise, is not accounted as such? This seems like a very biased internal policy decision and means of discounting experience in employees across the world. This should be highlighted and incurred about the upcoming council meeting, regardless of outcome for the legislation to be read. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there a name attached to that comment?
Yeah, it was Samuel, and without last name.
All right. Are there any other hands raised on Zoom or any other comments that have come in through the chat?
No.
Okay, thank you so much. I don't see anybody in chambers, so we will move on to notes about the council schedule, which I do have notes about the council schedule. This is our only regular session this month, and so August is a little strange, so I just wanted to highlight that. We only have this one regular session because we will have four sessions related to the city, the Civil City Budget Proposal. This year, presentations will be focused more on our outcome or priority-based budgeting model, so it's a little bit different than it has been in past years, and these are kind of like preliminary plans in terms of how the topics are going to go down. But our first budget meeting will be on August 18th, and that will be a general overview of how presentations will go, and then we'll talk about high-performing governments, and here are presentations around those budget areas. August 20th will be affordable housing and homelessness, economic development and public safety. August 25th will be community health and vitality, and August 27th will be transportation and Bloomington transit. And I do want to, again, like, emphasize this could be subject to change until it is officially posted in terms of those topics on those particular dates, but the dates of the meeting are set August 18th, 20, 25, 27, so that is four meetings spread over two weeks. Councilmember Asari, do you have a question on that?
Yes. Do we know yet when we're going to be getting the packet information on it? Because I feel, have we even, I don't think we've discussed that in any committee setting.
Yeah. Council Attorney Lainer, do you know that...
Would you like me to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, I know that that packet is actually just ran in to the deputy mayor on my way in. I know it is being currently assembled, but I don't know if there's a certain date on when she wants to send it out by.
Well, it's smart, when do we want to receive it is also a question.
The deputy mayor is working on the budget book currently for the budget hearings. We may receive that tomorrow or Friday.
Oh, okay, okay, so we should get it...
And then we'll go through the process of disseminating that to council members and placing it onboard. Of course, the controller, Controller's office would be involved in putting it on the budget page of the city's website and so forth.
Great. Can, just, because if, am I recalling correctly, last year we got it much later than we were supposed to, correct?
I think by, like, statutory, like, open-door law kind of posting necessity, I think it only has to be distributed 48 hours in advance of the first meeting date.
No, I think the budget we have to get...
Do we have to get the budget sooner than that?
It feels like a clerk question. I just want to make sure we do it right, because last, I mean, last year it was very difficult to read, and I read it, but it was very difficult to read in the time that we were given. I think we only had, I think we got it on Friday for sessions that started on Monday, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. Clerk Bolden...
I think you're asking a slightly different question than Councilmember Stossberg was answering about the statutory guidelines versus what has traditionally been asked for and provided by the administration. Yes, last year was a little bit tighter timeline, it was a new administration, and they were trying to get your updated salary grade chart in with it as well, but I think this year you're going to get it much closer to the time the council has asked for, and that'll be the first time in a while, a while meaning several years.
So usually we ask for, what, two weeks to have it, or...
I would have to go back and look, honestly. Councilmember Asari, I haven't looked at that in a while because that hasn't happened, but you're getting it, it looks like you're going to get it more than a week before the hearings, which is an improvement.
Great. Thank you. The other thing is this year we've spread those four meetings out over two weeks, and last year they were all in one week. So hopefully that will also allow members more time to be able to look at each of those sections, regardless of when we get it, honestly. But in terms of statutory guideline, what would be the final date? Do you have that?
No.
For Bolden off the top of your head, no?
No, I think Attorney Lainer might have some information on that, but do you mean for publication, or do you mean for adoption, or...
I mean for publication.
No idea.
Okay. Cool. Do you know off the top of your head, Attorney Lainer?
Are you talking for passage of the ordinance or simply for the hearings?
Simply for the hearings. Is there a...
I'm not aware of a specific deadline that would be in the nature of two weeks prior to the budget hearings, but, you know, I think you'll certainly have access to the information farther in advance than 48 hours before the meeting. Certainly that's our intention.
Fantastic. And then do we have any, have you thought at all of the, how to structure our pre-questions prior to the hearings, collecting those or anything like that?
I believe that Councilmember Piedmont Smith has thought about it.
Yeah, I'm communicating with the deputy mayor and the controller regarding that as well, and the intention is to potentially start receiving questions in advance of the hearings.
Uh huh. Yeah, last year, last year I put together like some Google Docs, and we had them per day, per presentation, so, I mean, but it would be great to have some guidance on sort of how we all want to do them, so we're not sort of doing that at the last minute.
Maybe if councilmembers have preferences or ideas about that, they could send those to Council Attorney Lainer and CC me on that, and maybe CC...
Maybe something to discuss at fiscal committee, though, for this week, too.
I was about to say, maybe CC Councilmember Piedmont Smith as chair of fiscal committee, because that is something that the fiscal committee should be kind of active in helping facilitate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're not meeting until the 21st for that, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions about those four budget meetings? Because I did have another note about highlight, I had two other schedule highlights.
Base...
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I believe those budget hearings start at 5:30, not our usual 6:30, so I wanted to highlight that.
That's correct. The annual schedule adopted by council reflects that the budget hearings begin at 5:30.
Thank you so much for that correction, because it is on, it's 6:30 on my calendar.
That was recently changed, we found. For some reason, the calendar times were set up at the beginning of the year in January at 6:30 as opposed to 5:30.
Okay, that would be why they are like that on my calendar then, thank you. My other scheduling notes, I wanted to make sure to highlight that our next deliberation session is on Wednesday, September 10th, and that might seem like a long way away to you right now, but I think that I have mentioned before that Director of Planning David Hittle is going to be with us for that night, and we are going to be doing community focus groups about UDO stuff, and as Councilmember Daly mentioned, like, he is going to her councilmember meeting this week, and he's also been meeting with other small groups around the city to get feedback around certain topics. So that deliberation session is going to be used as a session to, so that he can receive feedback from the community around various topics. So I'm working on planning that with him right now in terms of being able to advertise some of those specific topics and questions that he wants to talk about, but I just want to make sure to get that date out there, if anybody managed to listen this far into the meeting, that on Wednesday, September 10th, I'm hoping to have a lot of community members here to participate in that conversation, and if anybody has any suggestions on specific organizations maybe that you work with or have experience with, who might have mailing lists that would, you know, have folks applicable to this conversation, let me know, or let Mr. Hittle know so that we can make sure to advertise to those folks. And then our next regular session is September 3rd, and that is it. Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
We will have a Committee on Council Processes meeting on Monday, August 11th, at 12:15 in the Allison Conference Room.
Great, thank you very much. And with that, we are adjourned.